Say, Michelle has been involved, so if we'll have to choose. For the record, would you say your name and your title?
Yeah, absolutely.
Give us about a five to eight minute, sorry, if that's long.
Yeah, if that's long, yeah. So my name is Kat Davis. I'm the advisor for climate justice, working on helping to curate the Climate Crisis Response Committee in response to the Climate Crisis Response Policy. That will be overseeing the implementation of that policy at PPS. So the application for participation in the committee closed on June 15th, and we received 70 applications. So that was pretty impressive, in my opinion. I don't have zero reference, but I find that to be a good amount. A little over 20 of which were students. So we just completed the first round of review of those applications, and I'm now passing on that review to our selection committee that will be helping to narrow down our selection. And we should have those choices finalized by the middle of July. Can you just be more specific? Share more specifically. Any, I guess, any questions? Kind of where we're at right now, sort of in process, but it's closed and moving forward.
With the target to have... That brings you to the board at the first meeting in August.
Yes, yes, that first August meeting for when we'd be able to onboard that committee before school starts.
Any questions? No, thank you for that work.
I just talked to Director Green. He's going to join virtually just tomorrow.
Okay, Michelle's on her way. Thank you. So, let's see. I'm going to wait on the Religious and Cultural Observances, so the two, because I think
You're the ones very
Ailie and I are like well aware of.
Yeah.
So wait, so who is the policy translation?
Marsha.
Oh, you are?
Yeah. Yeah. I was going to be here anyway. So. That, I think where that work needs to start, and we'll start over the summer, is staff putting together the first two chunks of the work plan. The first section is what are the current policies that are important to be translated and already in good enough shape to translate. So we've already translated the complaint policy, but that's an example. And then the second chunk of that work plan is what are the policies that we need to move up in the queue for updating before they are translated. So they need that important and need updating, and we need to bring that to the committee for people who are involved. Always the way the work is going to unfold, and staff needs to do that work this summer.
Sorry, question, I don't think we discussed this before. But the policies, because of the format they're in, they're not like the rest of the webpage where you can just click on the...
Right, I think there are two issues. That's the technical issue, that the way they're loaded, they're almost loaded as a PDF. I'm sure that's not technically
They are loaded as PDF.
Okay.
You were right, you're right.
Woo, never get those right. So they can't, it's not like the rest of the webpage where you click the button and it translates. And I don't know if that can be fixed or not. The second problem is that those translations are not very helpful. But it's interesting if there might be a... If that's better than nothing for those while we're in this transition phase of working through the plan. I forgot one piece of the plan, which is also to build in on the policy page in the five PPS translated languages. If you need help, please go here, which will probably funnel them to Jamal, I guess, that will help answer questions about policies. And if there's a problem they're trying to solve, then the policy question, that'll also help them solve the problem. So there's a kick out. If that work isn't done yet, at least we give you, in one of those five languages, access to someone who can talk to you.
But that's but that's on the website right now?
No, but that's what we talked about in the meeting, is creating that. That's so while that work is being done slowly, and it's like all of the policy and the work is kind of grinding. And it will take time, that we have this place for people to go get help.
Of course, you're not one of the five. Major language.
I don't know if you're not, I don't know, I don't know what the mechanism is to tell you that in your native language.
Wouldn't you just click?
It's not in your language? It's not in your language?
Well, okay, but because it's not PDF.
I'm not talking about the length.
You're talking about like the base.
Like a general, a general, if you need help, here's how.
Right, and I thought on the, on the... That's really dangerous.
I could be dangerous with you, so let's go for it.
Okay, so if you're just like on the website, anything that's not a PDF, you can click the, like changing it. So wouldn't that be?
I see what you're saying. Yes, you probably can do that. Sorry.
Okay.
That's a nice one.
So that way we could just kick people?
Right, they get access to
Now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry, I was subtracting.
Do you have any questions?
No.
I think it's the area that I was working on with Rachel, the translation stuff, so that's in alignment with what we had talked about.
And Rachel's on the much deficient place regarding that.
It looks like we have Director Green joining us.
That is correct, you do.
I was going to say, my glasses on, but it looks like and Nike.
Yeah.
Well, I wasn't talking about
They, that's an awfully young, again, Director Green.
We were, we were 21 when we got married, when we turned 21.
Oh, my goodness. Beautiful picture. I am going to just skip for a moment, again, hoping that I can wait for Michelle to get here with a question about, do we have, have we had any public comment on any of the three policies in the public comment period? It's the school site councils, complaint policy, and liability claims handling?
Yeah.
I'm just curious, how come the number of the complaint policy changed?
The number of what?
The complaint policy changed.
It was backwards from the If you recall, we had, yeah. Typically, we have the policy and then the AD is under the, if it was 20. But for some reason, before our time, the AD came before the policy.
Okay.
Franklin Dewey does most of it. Yes.
And so the AD stays the same?
Yes.
And it follows it?
Yeah.
Oh, I think I might have asked this question. There's also seven recisions that have been first read. Is there any? Any public comment on any of the recisions? I'm going to, I'm going to go into just, I'm vetting the
I'm with you.
Okay, I'm going to keep, keep going. Herman, we're, we're waiting for Michelle for the update on the Religious and Cultural Observances Policy Revision update, but I'm going to go to, we have we have one new policy revision, and that is the workers' compensation self-insurance. And if you looked at the liability claims handling, this is, we, we're making some very similar updates to it, which is updating some of the language, but, and primarily increasing the threshold at which the board votes from 25,000 to 75,000. And it has been a long time since we updated it. I want to say, I'm going to guess somewhere in the early 2000s.
Yes, 2000.
Okay, so it's a pretty straightforward, very, I say, very similar to the liability claims. Does anyone have, do you want to provide any other commentary about the changes?
You teed it up. It's designed to have a parallel structure and governance threshold as the liability. It's just cleaning it up a little bit, making it a little bit streamlined, making it current and changing those approval thresholds, and also providing for the required reporting of those settlements, the level of threshold, which is the same as the liability.
Was there a red line version?
Yep.
Herman, do you have any questions about that?
I do not.
Okay, since we have a majority of the committee here, are everybody okay? We don't need, we don't need a motion, but is everybody okay with the recommendation to have a first reading of this, of this policy with the full board?
I'm okay with that.
Great, then we have two policies, not three policies, for recommended for recisions, a risk management program. And if anybody has, looking for something during their spare time, you can, you can go and actually see, there, there is the risk management webpage where people can get information.
It's a lot more than the policy.
Yeah, so there's not, there's not really a need for a policy, so, and again, provide the links if people are interested in it. Hello, Michelle? Just to catch you up, we, there's no public comment on all of our, our policies and recisions out for first reading. We just referred to the full committee or the full board, the workers' compensation revisions. So I don't know if you had any objection to that, okay? And now we're just into the, to the recision, so we talked about the first one, which is getting rid of the policy which is really unneeded, because we have a pretty robust risk management page. The second policy for rescission is the student transportation policy. Was there a very, would you give the rationale for the recommendation?
It, it doesn't provide a lot of significant or needed guidance. I mean, we are required to provide transportation by law. We have other policies that dictate how contracts are approved and transportation contracts the same way. I mean, that, this represents special medical behavioral protocol that identifies student records as come out of the language, and we're required by law to serve students with special needs. So for all of those reasons, it's just kind of a, it's a policy that doesn't say anything that we aren't already required to do and is quite a, several other places. Last amendment in 2000.
Any objection to? Or are people supportive of moving it to the full board with the recommendation for rescission?
Yes.
Herman?
Hi, Herman.
Well, I've got three, so I'm going to move on to the next one. So the, the third recommended rescission relates to capital projects, and if you read through it, it really is just a description of directing staff on how to post things for, on the board agenda, which we don't do for other contracts. And we already, we already have a very robust purchasing and contracting policy, so this is unnecessary. Any questions?
Still trying to get the meetings.
Everybody supportive of moving this to the full board for recommendation for rescission?
Yes.
There was, no, there was a nod.
Sorry, yes.
Herman? All right, so we'll send those to the full, full board for rescission along with the revised policy. Then, now that we have, back. Michelle, you also, we had, went ahead with the climate application, because your family would
Yes, so did we, we have a roster of, like, a large roster of cultural
Yes, Kat was here and kind of described the number of applicants and the process and everything, so I figured it was okay for you to miss it, because
Yes, absolutely. I can't wait to see that, to get into the, looking through the applications.
Melissa, do you want to do the update on the Religious?
Yes. So we had a really good meeting with students and two board members, everyone who was there, to talk about
Yan was there.
And Yan, thank you. I can't remember the screen.
That's what I was trying to
To talk through the criteria for identifying which religions we would, under which religions we would find observances, that there has to be some non-religious criteria for identifying those, and we looked at population concentrations, kind of like we do the district languages we're going to translate, so the data is, wouldn't say as pristine as census data. It's not a question that the census asks, but we've got some county level data, and we looked at some other sources, and I think it's fairly, it all tells about the same story.
So was that just to, I'm sorry, I missed the first point, they're just gathering demographic information, trying to figure out the percentages of populations that might correspond to a certain religion?
Right, right. You won't be surprised to know that there's, you know, a lot of unaffiliated in the, but their holidays don't show. So
Which is interesting in itself, because why wouldn't they, let's make it put some
I made a Festivus joke, and Julia told me no one would get it on the call.
I would have gotten it. Airing of grievances.
Yes, so, but back to the work of the, the work of this room. This is really a forcework, I'm going to
Yes, yeah, we want them in a
And so then there was conversation about the next steps for identifying which holidays in those religions, and it's about a 1% population threshold, kind of the working draft of the structure. And then we had the conversation about why it's important to have an educational component to this, of how people understand what the holiday is and why it's important to that religion, so it's not just a single statement, but also this is, this is what it means to this particular religion. And I think there'll be some other, I predict there'll be some other communication strategies that follow this work when it's done for the upcoming school year. Thirdly, there was conversation about the scope of impact. We talked about school-wide events and activities that are within PPS's control as distinguished from classroom-based activities, for which observing a sincerely held religious holiday, it is, you're entitled to an excused absence, so if something's just classroom-based, that solves that. But, but school-wide, like parent-teacher conferences, the same, as we've talked about, plays, assemblies, concerts. There's a, there's a chunk that we don't control, like OSAA, sports, IB testing, there'll be others. There's probably, there are still some gray areas, like PIL sports, and there are pieces to sort out. Those are the kind of three buckets, school-wide, classroom-based, we don't control. The next steps are for me to kind of document what we talked about, and bring it back to that group to figure out where the questions are and next steps. But that was, that was earlier this week.
What was really surprising is that, just the lack of data on religious situation.
Yeah, I told Julia this, but not you, I did some further research last night, trying to find other sources for us to be There are some, but it's hard to, it's hard to find the source data that tells you it's near in time or that it's reliable. But it, it also doesn't tell a dramatically different story. It is a little
Well, and I think what we saw was, it had, the county data had Catholic and other Christian denominations broken out. And then unaffiliated was the second largest, if you lump those two together, correct?
They were, yeah.
They were pretty close to each other, yeah.
And then the other religions had very small, 1% or 2%.
Is unaffiliated, unaffiliated with the denominations?
Or it's like not, not, it's like none.
Unaffiliated with the religion.
Yes, so in the, in the
I would imagine Portland's kind of pretty
Yeah, in the church, we call the Northwest, unlike Vermont, it's called the Nun Zone, because when people are asked their religious affiliation
That's not N-U-N.
It's N-O-N-E, yeah. The, the majority of people in the Northwest and places like Vermont, if you ask, what is your religious affiliation? They would say none.
That's 48% in the whole county.
Have a religious affiliation.
It must be a huge culture shock for people who live here.
From like places where the central, yeah.
Or even the east.
Yeah, just about everywhere else. Yeah, and it's really interesting too, that like, as we think about this, the cultural practice of religion, right? So like church nerdery, what we see is that like, the churches in the South, you know, Methodist Church have larger, larger membership numbers, but similar or lower attendance numbers. Whereas the Methodist churches in the West have lower membership numbers, but about the same attendance numbers. So people are more likely to affiliate, but maybe they don't practice in the same way. Like, it's very interesting, like, what does it mean to have a religious affiliation? And how does that play out culturally across the United States?
That is fascinating.
This is, I think you got about that stuff.
Good Friday is a holiday, like, like no work or anything.
Yeah, because it's like a cultural, religious
Because Wall Street closes down at noon.
Yeah, oh, they close on everything.
So it's hard work.
Well, it's a holiday, it's something.
Yeah. So it's interesting to think about, as we think about this, I think what we talked about in the group was looking at, I think it was people who identify as Muslim, Jewish, and Buddhist are the other kind of three. And so really being thoughtful about cultural and community practices that would necessitate tabs, that would, that would make those, or, you know, would make those celebrations easier for our students and staff.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
And we did note the like, sort of Eurocentric view of our calendar, which means that Julie and I both identify as Christian, so Easter and Christmas are already taken care, well, Easter's a Sunday, and Christmas is already during one of the breaks. So those kind of high holy days of the Christian calendar are already sort of off-school. So what's, how do we continue to have that conversation?
Oh, yeah, the other thing that I thought was interesting in the conversation is like, that by getting out of the calendar, we take the responsibility off of the student to be saying
Yeah, the burden.
Yeah, exactly.
The burden to be in other, like, my family celebrates Shabbat, it starts to, send down, whatever.
Or like Yom Kippur is one of the high holy Jewish days, and one of the students said they've had to explain to their teachers what that even is. And so that part of our work is to do some education and communication about why these things are important, and that we honor our students to celebrate them.
You know who has an amazing calendar is Planetary, Planetary Blomet. They have an amazing multicultural, I mean, on every day, there's something.
That's awesome.
It's really good, and you can sign up to be on their mailing list, and it just, it impacts to your Google Calendar.
Yeah, we talked about PPS could just do that.
Yeah.
Right?
We actually have a name of a person that does this.
Well, it's
Yes, we could.
The same thing.
I have a curiosity question when, when we get around to asking questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Herman, we're at that stage.
So, and just in thinking about this, and, you know, we're looking at it from the calendar perspective, my question is going to be, I don't even know how, I'm just going to start talking, and smart people help me out. Are we opening ourselves up to a lawsuit of some kind? I know that some years ago, we stopped, we stopped wanting to say, you know, around the holiday season in PPS, you can't put up things that say Merry Christmas, because it recognizes Christ in Christmas. And so you have to say like Happy Hanukkah and stuff like, you know, or Happy Holidays and stuff like that. And so now, by doing this, are we, are, are we now saying that it's okay to recognize every other major religion that has different things that come up, with the exception of Christianity? As where, you know, now we're going to say that this is, you know, this holiday, and we're putting it on the calendar as this holiday, or we're exposing it as this holiday. But when it comes to anything related to Christianity and recognizing the name of Christ, that we, we now, we can't say that. So I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm a little conflicted trying to understand how this is all going to, how this is all going to play out. And if we can now go back to, like, we were at some point told that we can't even put up snowflakes and different things. And so how is this going to play out beyond the policy, but in practicality, how it lives out on the day-to-day in our classrooms with our, in our schools?
So Director Green, I want to assure you that no one asked the legal department whether there was a legal problem with snowflakes. So we should probably align on that, that if there is not
Snowflakes are fine.
Snowflakes.
But we'll look into it some more.
I think there's the issue, the cost, I mean, so I guess whatever lawyer would tell you is he can never stop anyone from suing. But the question is, is there a viable basis to do so? And what we are trying to do is have a policy that acknowledges religious observances without giving favor to any particular religion, but having religiously neutral criteria for selecting which holidays get observed. So I, Christianity is not excluded from that, it's just already, because Christmas is a national holiday, and because the districts and schools are already closed, it doesn't, it's not in play for the purposes that these conversations are impacting. And Easter happens on a Sunday every year, so it's, so is those, assuming that those are the two major Christian holidays, it's not that they are giving, being observed less or being treated differently. We just know the answer to those already, the construct of what we're trying to solve with these other observances. What, what we're working hard to do, I want to just say again, is figuring out what the neutral criteria are for selecting the religions that have holidays that, that we want to be sensitive to. Now, this is, for this year, not a change to the formal district calendar. This is direction to schools and the district, but really to schools to be careful mindful of these holidays and work around them in scheduling school-wide events in areas of
But it's also just helpful to have it on the calendar as a notice, because at Grant, or at Grouse, we had kids who weren't eating in the lunchroom all of a sudden. And one of the, like, EAs said to me, like, you know, before I walked into the lunchroom, like, just a reminder, Ramadan started, so we're going to have some of our older kids choosing to fast. And, and normally, if we see a kid not eating, we'll go up and say, hey, what's going on? Like, are you not feeling well? Did you not bring lunch? Like, what's going on? But it was like, oh, we, you know, to be respectful and to know that that's going on. So we don't suddenly start harassing kids very well intentionally, but, but causing something awkward. So Herman, my response to the whole, like, are we minimizing the Christian faith? I think for me, it's, it's about, for so long, Christianity has held a somewhat like dominant place in society.
No, 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 no.
I used to call it Christmas, right?
I'm sorry, I don't feel like we're minimizing the Christian faith. No, 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 that's, that's not, I, I'm saying that our, what I was asking was more around the legalities around
Supporting anything.
Are we, and, and so because I, I, I would, I would wholeheartedly agree that mostly, for, for the most part, Christian holidays have been widely known and widely accepted by, by most businesses and organizations. So that's not, I'm not in no way saying that.
I think the question that you're asking, Herman, is like, for example, if we put on the calendar Yom Kippur, is that going to run afoul with any, as long as we use some sort of criteria
Neutral criteria.
That sounds
Correct.
That's, that's more like, so if you put on the calendar that, you know, and again, forgive my, you know, my, my ignorance. I don't know a lot of the, the other religious holidays. I know we have them, I just don't know what they're, they're called. So forgive my ignorance in that. But if we put the, that holiday on the calendar as it is, and then on, when it comes to, to Christmas or Easter, it's not listed as it is, like Christmas, or X, and, and it's replaced with Xmas, or something like that. Are we now exposing ourselves to someone saying, well, you listed their holiday full name, and you didn't list our holiday full name, so now I want to sue the district for showing partiality to the Muslim faith over the Christian faith, because you didn't list Christmas, you put X
But it's listed ones that are on school days, right?
Christmas is listed as a holiday, so we should treat all religious observances We should treat all religious observances and holidays at equal terms as the district. And we can't control what other people, how other people might list them, but on the district controlled documents, we should, we should treat them.
So theoretically, you'd have like two weeks, end of December, first of January as winter holiday. But on December 25th, it would say Christmas and on
Christmas is a national holiday.
And then Santa Claus might be listed as well.
On September 25th, it would say
Yom Kippur.
Yom Kippur, right. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, that, that's, that's exactly, again, I'm just looking at it from the, the legality. I'm, I'm really trying to figure out, you know, I love what we're doing. I, I mean, I absolutely, absolutely love it. There's no part of me that's going to contest any of this. I just want to ask questions about like, I don't want us to get sued and then somebody quote me as saying, you know, Herman Green did this because him and Ali are pastors and I don't know.
Yeah.
I think this came from a, from a
These came from
We have a video of the students bringing this issue forward and they have still
Okay.
But I understand what you're saying Herman, because that, you know, is, are we pushing some sort of religious agenda? But I do think this is from our
There is one happening in the US right now.
There is one happening, right? So I mean, I think
Our students, especially our Jewish and Muslim students who are saying, we, we are struggling. Can you help us with how we schedule our calendar in a way that's respectful?
These are major world religions. It's not like, you know, we're not picking up Portland.
I do think
I always wonder what school districts in New York or places that have, like in Minnesota has a large Muslim, American community, African. You know, what are those places doing?
And I think we've gotten some feedback
In places that are more multicultural and
I can't give you a broad survey, but I do think what it's places we've looked, they are, there are more holidays that are referred in those communities that have more religions represented. And sometimes the school year is longer, extends farther into the summer because they have more days off.
So that, that would be the trade-off. I mean, if we, so this next year, we're just going to put a note on the calendar, asking our principals and our staff not to schedule things on those days. But if we, and then if we want to have a bigger conversation in this next year about the calendar for 23, 24, we might talk about, do we want to take Yom Kippur off? Do we want to take eat off? And if we do that, then we, that means negotiating with our labor partners, it means extending the school year. So there are some pretty big convers, that's why we can't do it this year. We've already sort of negotiated the calendar. We've got to like talk about it now for 23, 24.
In the future, yeah, it makes sense.
Yeah, but like Dearborn and Detroit are places where
Yeah.
There's some guys. Well, I think that's a great question you asked Herman and I think also, and we shall be mindful of Liz's response. It's like, we can only control what the district said, but not us.
Right.
There'll be, I could just, a point of view and other people may misinterpret it. So maybe that is a reason why when something gets rolled out, that it comes with a like FAQ or some sort of background, like here's why it looks different and here's why in the past when we didn't say Christmas or have it on the calendar, that it's now on the calendar because we've gone through this process and here's what it means. But it may, it, there's, there will likely be mistakes. I mean, there will might be people who interpret it differently than us, but maybe not actually.
Or talk about it differently.
Okay, anything else on that topic? Uh, thanks for the ongoing work.
Thank you for answering my question.
So the next item is a longer update and overview of the community engagement around school-based fundraising. And so we have a couple of items. There was a, a number of materials that were on, um, that were posted. And Robin, are you going to provide the presentation or is John?
I am, he's, he's, uh, he's here for
Okay, yeah. Um, we also have some public comment. Um, and we have four people signed up or is it three than one written?
Three or four.
We have, so we have four people sent out for the comment. We also, I'd like to just direct people's attention to also in your inbox, you have some public comments around this agenda item that was submitted by Celeste, who is the incoming PTA president at Scott and participated in the roundtable but couldn't make it today. So you have some public comment in your inbox as well. Um, but we'll start with the presentation. Go ahead, like introduce your name and title and
Hello, my name is Robin Ferrone, Director of Strategic Partnerships. Um, I wanted to give you a little bit of an overview of the meetings that we held and then some highlights from the report that was provided to you. I also had copies if anyone would like a paper copy of the report. So we, um, the, the goal was to do some targeted engagement from two communities we hadn't heard from yet on this issue that we felt like was, was lacking in our, in our whole view. Um, so there was a meeting held with the district student council. And then two targeted parent leader engagement where we asked administrators and directors if, if they wanted to invite parent leaders from the Roosevelt and McDaniel cohorts. And then we held the meetings at McDan, McDaniel High School and one at Roosevelt High School. And then the feeder schools from those attended those, that meeting in their neighborhood. And it wasn't like broadcast to anyone, it was like targeted, you know, to the, the parent leaders. So a lot of the parents who came are actively involved in their school community, either through the PTA or some sort of PTO or, or other organ, unaffiliated with PTA organization. Site council, I know was mentioned at least once or actively involved in volunteering in their school community. And we provided in the materials, the slide deck that we presented. We didn't go slide by slide, we presented it by way of background. Um, these are all of the issues that we've heard talked about at the policy committee. This is the background. Uh, we also provided that website link, it was like a Google site where we posted links to documents where you could kind of see the background of all the different types of fundraising that happens across the district. And then from, from there, we, um, we wrote up notes, detailed notes and recordings from all of the meeting and came up with these three themes that are in the report. Um, and then the final, and I'm going to go over that a little bit. And then the final piece was an administrator survey that we put out through our admin portal, which is like an inter-office newsletter type of thing. And that had the four questions that are listed in the report. Very open-ended questions. And then the bulleted responses are a selection of representative quotes from the administrators in their own words. So that, that is kind of by way of background of what that piece was. And that was anonymous. So we, so that we were, you know, hearing what administrators thought of the policy without necessarily their name attached to their opinions.
Can I ask about the anonymity? Because I'm really interested in how surveys are like, different people handle this differently. Was that done by a third party or how was it anonymous?
No, but we did
With this IP address sometimes.
You know, we're, you know, we're fully Google here. So it, it was a Google form where we did not collect emails, like, because you can select to automatically collect emails of every response. And so we told them that that was not being collected. And so it came through just, um, you know, in, in the spreadsheet.
As comments. Okay, and then you also in the preamble said this is anonymous because we're doing
Yes, and they had an option to include their name and I would say a handful of people included their name, but most responded anonymously.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and so we have their responses to the four questions per person. So we know what, like one person answered to each of them, but we don't know like necessarily which school they were from. Um, and we also allowed, um, uh, like business managers could respond to, so it wasn't just principals. So whoever in that school community worked with their fundraising helps respond.
That's great, I appreciate that. I, I think all of our buildings are different, or a lot of our, you know, different buildings have different practices, so that's really smart.
And Director Bram Edwards attended the, the student engagement and the two-parent engagement as well. Um, so I, as an observer As an observer, yes. Just listen. So the, and the
Can I ask one more question about that? Those special, thank you for talking about like the feeder schools into McDaniel and Roosevelt. Did you hear from black and brown families?
Um, yeah.
And to what degree do you think? I mean, I'm just curious because I'm doing the same type of work for, for my day job. And we're starting to, uh, well, we're starting to see patterns emerge. And, and that's where, uh, we have community members speaking on behalf of kids of color. But we're not hearing from the families of kids of color. And so it's just a nuance that, you know, when we say, for, for my work, we want to center the voices of people of color. We want to hear from them, we don't want them to be represented by someone that is not from that community. And it's really an important nuance. We're talking about climate change and centering voices of our most vulnerable. So it's just something I, I'm trying to bring a little bit of awareness around. Because I think it's important that we listen to and has the lived experience in that ground and
Yeah.
And, and, and the voice to advocate.
I mean, I can only, I can only report on what I observed.
Of course.
It was something we asked people to disclose. Um, but so in Roosevelt, um, we had, we had low attendance compared to the responses that we were expecting. So we had four out of 10 people come and I would say one was a person of color and out of the four.
Okay.
And then at
So it was 25% out of four, but only 10% if, if everybody attended, okay.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I don't know who else would have been represented.
I would really be interested in hearing, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm, I'm really interested in hearing from the communities, from, from the kids that we are underserving. That's all I'm saying. I, I, I feel like it's really important.
Because it was a small, small group, um, everybody got to participate as much as they want. And the individual who was a representative of Caesar Chavez did participate very good.
And they can't, they can't speak for the whole community either, right? So just, you know, if they're a Latinx person, they're not speaking for everybody, you know. So, so having those numbers is really important. I'm talking about this from a research perspective and from a like actually trying to implement. You know, we, it's time to move from talk to like, let's do something a little bit differently. And that's not, you know, any judgment on you. I think this is great that you heard from people and you thought, considered the feeder patterns. But I, I kind of, my ears turned off when I heard Roosevelt and McDaniel, but they perked back up because I thought, I heard feeder pattern. I didn't hear people.
Right, so I
So feeder pattern in my mind, it was like
So the other, the other group was more of those
It was a code for
Yeah, it was larger and it was more
So at McDaniel, we had 13 participants. I, I would estimate like at least a quarter were people of color.
Okay. Thank you.
And this, and the handout, I didn't think to include it in the, in the written report, but on the very back page, I added the list of schools that were represented.
So we have this in our board books, right?
It's in the board book at this very last page that says some schools didn't have. So, you know, we can update that on the, in the board book. But, and a couple of them had more than one person from that school, but I only listed the school ones. But it, I mean, it sort of gives you a representation of the schools that we've heard from.
There were also some people who had multi, like either because they had kids or it was for staff who had multi-school experiences, which was interesting, so like a very wide divergence of experiences.
And a couple that, um, at, at the McDaniel meeting that had students in PPS and then they also worked in a different
Both self-fulfilling.
School in, in PPS too.
Had some experiences.
Yeah. Um, so
So I'm just thinking like, um, this is definitely school-based, but there's, like, some of our partners actually work with these families, like the Black Parent Initiative, SCI. Help me out for a minute. It's a great way Latino Network, you know, to hear from families that, that go to our schools. So just maybe
That's what I would be thinking too, Michelle. POIC and those led, um, if there was a way that they work with all black families that live in all of these, every, every one of the clusters that, that you guys were just talking about, they have black families, majority black families that live in those neighborhoods, come to pretty much any event that they put on. So if we were to host something or allow, um, allow them to host something and then bring that same survey, um, I, I think we get a larger pull.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the comments and the, the suggestions. Uh, 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 look, I agree. Uh, we, we, we definitely want to hear from more, uh, communities of color, staff or, uh, families of color. Now, I appreciate Director Green, Director Hollins for, uh, sharing some, uh, names of, of folks on, in your communities. Um, many of them joined us. Uh, and so I think it's going to take, you know, all of us working together to, to really lift up those voices.
Thank you Jonathan. Yeah, I, I just always want to make sure like, we talk to black families. Like it's okay to say black family and that we, that we hear from black families because of our, 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 our achievement outcomes. So, which is why I mentioned, I forgot about POIC, but POIC is a great one. I've actually, at my city job, I've posted things there too. Very well attended, pizzas went well with everybody, you know, it's really close, it's right up the street. And very good participation rates.
We also did give participants a $50 gift card to Fred Meyer and appreciation of their time.
That's excellent.
And we disclosed that in the invitation.
That's excellent.
And provided for the intro.
I can really make a quick comment in that I attended that meeting and I can say that of all the PPS event things that I, which I, you know, I've been doing a lot of
Yeah.
Robin did a fantastic job in terms of outlining, um, childcare, dinner and actually paying people for participating. And so I, I think you're a meaning that I just wanted to mention that again, I thought it was great.
That's excellent. That's, those are all best practices for getting, you know, people in the room that might have a longer way to come. So I appreciate that too.
Um, so, so the report outlines kind of three themes that we, that we pulled out. The collective impact model being the first, um, with a, a strong interest in, and how do we begin to shift towards a district-wide fundraising model and utilize the fund for PPS, maybe to bring communities together around targeted goals of fundraising or meeting unmet needs in schools through, through that method. And there, it kind of goes on here, there was some suggestions around how that might work. And there was definitely, um, I would say a, a, the majority opinion was that school foundations should end or phase out. But there was also an opinion about maybe raising a percent that goes to the shared funds. So that, that is called out here in bullets. 50% was mentioned more than once now by participants, was not something staff brought up.
Would it be, um, I'd be interested in, you know, looking at how that works out like dollar-wise per building or, you know, if we could just have like a model. You know, what, what's the change from the 30%? You know, what's the final outcome when we increase that percentage by 20, 20 points? Does that get us closer to what we're thinking or is it more needed?
Well, my question, like, so I think this goes to the heart of some of the questions. Like what is it that we're thinking? I mean, are we thinking that, and this is the initial question, like what, what do we as a board think about foundations? Is it something we want to, I mean, that's what we're trying to get at. And so is it, is it that we, I mean, one of the conversations we've had is that when you look at the staffing dollars, and this is a point Amy has made a couple of times, when we look at our budget, the, the amount per people is lower at the schools that have foundations. Because we're focusing on an equity budget and that's as it should be. So when we reduce the foundation at those schools, the money does go to other schools that are getting a, an investment already, which is equity and what we need to be doing. And what's the impact on those other schools? And the one place like we don't consider foundation fundraising when we do staffing, except for in October, when we do the rightsizing, right? Like or whatever it's called. When in October, we look at and say.
The enrollment.
Like this school has, I mean, well, we all know about Glencoe because they've been coming to our meetings and very passionate advocates for their shoes. In October, we might look at Glencoe and say, the district, when I say we, not the board, we don't do that part. But the district might look at Glencoe and say, they, they have the highest class sizes. We have an additional staff person, we're going to give it there. But then if they look at a school, let's say, well, inside experience there that has already fundraised a foundation teacher for that third grade, then they're not going to put the teacher there because they already have that person filled because they fundraised for it. So, so that's one of the pieces too, as we think about this, there are some, there's some complexities to it. And I think, you know, when I read this, I think we're, the move towards, I love all the like, the collective impact, the how do we build together? That's the thing I've been saying about PTA, all school-based fundraising, how do we build together for all of our kids? Rather than thinking about my kids, my school, but thinking about the global, how do we care for one another? Um, which is why I actually like the foundation fundraiser better than the PTAs because foundation at least has some equity impact. Or are PTAs only create run, raise funds for their school? So how do we do this through all of our school-based fundraising? And it's hard because we can't, we don't have any control over PTAs. But that's the like.
Can we hold your rest, this till the discussion, let Robin?
Finish.
Cause the predominant, so we, they got this, this slide deck and it was presented. And in some cases, it was like, here's some of the solutions. Sometimes people knew some of the potential solutions.
Conversation.
And so I think it was a pretty, without any sort of like steering group one way or the other, a pretty open discussion. And I would say the vast majority of people were.
I mean, that's clear in the report.
No work buying staff, but had, but had a lot of other ideas and.
So are we going to let Robin finish? Cause I feel like you interrupted what I was saying so you can make a speech. So if we're going to have her talk, let's have her talk. That's how I feel. Yeah, but I was talking and you said, let's let Robin finish and then you started endorsing.
I was very uncomfortable. I'd like to hear the staff. I don't know if I should leave or if I should just stick it with it, but this is.
Please stay with them.
This is, this is, um, it's, it's irritating in, in a, in a meeting to have this back and forth. Especially because you're probably off work already and you're here with us. I'd like to hear the rest of the presentation as well.
Oh.
Thank you. I'm sorry for the interruption. It's amazing.
So, um, that, I don't know that I really called out here. We had very open-ended questions, you know, when I talk, when I'm talking about this discussion. So the questions were, what could responsible fundraising look like in PPS? How can fundraising be more inclusive and contribute to a stronger sense of community district-wide? And what changes would you like to see related to fundraising and to any guidelines for parent groups that currently fundraise? So that was what we put out. We, we had people talk amongst themselves and then report back and then we had a group discussion. So these themes that we called out weren't like directed, but they were more like how the conversation went and what issues were coalesced around. And it, and it was reflective of, very similar in the two different meetings, I would say overall. So the second theme I did, wanted to get to was around the community building. Because, and then this kind of gets, is somewhat of a collective impact model, but it was also about not just money, you know? And, and how do we work together and help each other and support each other? And people expressed gratitude for the opportunity to come together and to share ideas amongst each other and wanted to know if there would be continued ways to do that, if we can facilitate that. And then there was some different opinions about, yes, let's continue doing that within our cohort. Or maybe let's bring in other schools that, that we, maybe there could be a more listening session. So that there was sort of some different opinions about whether people really wanted to, to kind of do that all in one room or not. Um, so I think it's a more nuanced thing that we kind of have to tease out. Like what, what would that look like if we were going to continue to do community building next year around these issues? Not just about like the policy itself and how to change it. But like, how do we help our schools get what they need and not constantly be asking parents for money as the only solution? And, and what could that look like, a citywide kind of movement?
That's cool.
Yeah, so I, I just want to flag this sentence, the disconnect between fundraising to provide families with food, coats or other basic needs versus other schools fundraising for staff and some things such as field trips, travel and other extra, extras creates animosity. I think that's a, that's a really important note from the community building aspect and what, what some of our schools are fundraising for really basic needs of kids.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes there, there was sort of a tension between like, should we like let people know? Maybe they just don't understand, like maybe, and then like, oh wait, we don't want to, you know, we don't want to put every, all our needs on display and, and we don't mean sympathy or, you know.
I love that term, whoever had poverty parades, I think you.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, very wise.
Yeah, so that, that, that is sort of a, a challenge, I would say, in, in the, in the model of the district-wide community building. And then the third theme is around increased transparency and, um, you know, the ability to kind of understand, like there was a lot of, well, I hear this is happening. Or, you know, are people really contributing a full one-third of everything now? And, and how do we know? And where can we see where the money's going? Like, how can we, when we go to pps.net, we can't just search foundation and find all this information. So how do we know how to find it? And to understand the complexities, when we brought up things like contracts and playgrounds and field trips and other things that parent groups fundraise for their, you know, they were kind of like, well, where would we find that information? And as staff, we're thinking, we're not really collecting all of that centrally right now. We do for the foundations. There's a lot on fundforpps.org. But still, that may not be completely accessible to all and easy to find.
So the Fund for PPS, they issue an annual, like annual report or end of the season report or something. But it, does it get down to that granularity where we can see? I don't recall, I haven't looked at it in a long time, but I don't recall that it was very clear.
But yeah, it's much more of an overview. But on the fund for, fundforpps.org, there are spreadsheets you can find if you go to the local school foundations tab and then down to the bottom. And then it does have a spreadsheet of every school foundation, what they raise and their one-third that it goes to the PPS parent fund. But again, like people wouldn't necessarily know how to find that if they hadn't spent some time on that website.
And I think the lack of transparency, just from my lived experience, the PTA of the well-in didn't pay for the field trips themselves. They gave that money to the principal's discretionary fund. Because it was a liability issue of the PTA, my understanding was from Oregon PTA, that if the PTA paid for the field trips and if something happened, the PTA board was liable. So we donated the money to the school and the principal. So when we talk about transparency, that those layers get really complicated on this other thing.
Yeah, yeah, then there's student body funds. Yeah.
Yeah, very complicated.
And the Google site that I linked in the, um, in the report, you know, it's a hyperlink. We also did some research to pull PTA dollars by school, like looking up on GuideStar. And, and when you look at those next to the foundation dollars, you can see that it's a lot of the same schools that are able to raise for foundations are also raising a lot of money for PTA. And so people were also expressing, you know, the differentials in like materials, like ceramics class at Roosevelt. They don't have enough money to have the nice materials that they expect they probably have at another school. And, um, you know, that the minimum standard should be provided to all schools across the board without such a reliance on parent fundraising. That creates a different experience for students, I would say is a part of that as well. It wasn't just around the foundations issue.
Well, and I think you're right, Director Brim Edwards, of what we're hearing from our community. And I know what the Reform PPS Foundation Group has said, it's the, the desire to, to look at, how do we do whole group, whole district fundraising? And, and I heard you say, how do we phase out individual foundations? This may be a, a majority opinion we heard in these conversations.
Yeah, it was kind of interesting because, um, yes, and I think then, but the conversation, there really was, there was this strong, I've got people here who are going to pop, pop comments and maybe they just will come up, but really a strong sense of like, we still want to raise money to support like classroom teachers with things like supplies. I mean, then there was this huge like gulf between what some teacher allotment gets. But there was a sense that at all schools, that was a way that they could actually support students is by directly providing supports to teachers. And so there seemed to be like, that is something we want to still continue to do. I say that there's a big disparity among what each teacher got at different schools. But it was, there, there wasn't anyone who was advocating like that, that isn't a way that a parent shouldn't help their school. Does it sense it kind of help?
That's, that's right, Director Brim Edwards. I mean, I, I heard that loud and clear as well. And I think that, you know, that, that's what was, if, if I'm honest, I think that's what was difficult for me to, to grapple with, right? Kind of two different rules for two different processes, even though the impact is still the same, uh, on the other side. In other words, there are schools that we have educators who are getting a thousand dollars in, at the beginning of the year versus a $200 or a $100, $50, you know, dollar gift card. So the outcome, the output is still the same and the impact, the inequity is still the same. But what was really, really difficult for me to grasp is how we, how there was, there was a desire essentially, what I felt were different rules for different pieces. Um, and, and so I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm just bringing that forward as a, as part of the conversation.
I think if you look at like the administrator survey with, with the parent input side by side, it was kind of like, if we could get our basic needs met by the district, we wouldn't need to keep doing all this parent fundraising. I mean, so like, there was some talk around the teacher supplies, like if we could just have a standard amount, then we, maybe you wouldn't have such a differential of like, teachers want to go where they're going to be most supported and have like the same administrator. And so like, it gets mixed up in a lot of other issues around like keeping, um, keeping your staff and in the schools and the high turnover that we have in school needs and issues like that. How money contributes to those challenges as well. I don't know. Director Brim Edwards, you think we agreed with that was kind of called out?
Yeah, I think that's. I mean, there were also the issue of playgrounds, kind of like, hey, because it seems like more like, that's a discrete goal. And we have like a scrappy group of people could like make it happen. But it wasn't a sustained year after year, we're going to have the auction to raise this huge amount of money. Like we can't do that. But maybe if you gave us like a discrete, like goal that is something that has like long lasting benefit, like, like now. So there didn't seem to be a sense of, we should stop that because that seemed different than the main first step.
If sometimes you can't get your needs met, then you're going to have to like figure out a way to get it done. That, that's sort of the sense of. Not that that was how people wanted to spend their energy, but if, if they needed something, they were willing to. Or a lot of them go to businesses because they don't want to keep asking their parents for money. So how can the district support that with like a bigger ask or a more organized ask?
And I'm really excited to see, like, a lot of folks are saying, we need to get our state to fund our schools adequately. I mean, that, that, I think that's the bottom line is that we know that, I think the foundations came in after Metro Five and it was a desperate attempt to deal with the gap in funding. And it's all this time later and it still hasn't been fixed. So we can spin and argue about foundations or, and, or we can put our energy to how do we actually get quality education models funded for our students?
Do we have an idea, um, when you, you brought up turnover, administrator turnover? Does the turnover map to higher poverty schools?
I think there, there's.
I mean, I know, I know, I know the ones that are in my neighborhood, yes.
Yeah.
But I just wondered globally if that's the case.
I think it's also true of teachers. Like if you look at the years of experience of teachers, you have more concentrated on higher expenses.
That's it for my report. Thank you, Robin. I really, and thank you for your chiming in there to tell us how great the, the engagement was. That's super important and I appreciate you all for really doing the due diligence to get in from, from folks.
I really appreciate the way the, the report was formatted and my theme and, you know, just observation and it was, it was really good. Thanks.
Any questions or Director Green, do you have any questions about the, the engagement?
I'm, I'm hoping that a comment that we don't stop here with our engagement, that we, that we actually listen to more diverse voices, specifically black voices. I think it'd be important to get, you know, I don't think we're done. I hope, I hope we're not. I would rather, I would rather, um, do a great job than to rush through this.
Wow, rushing.
Yeah.
Yes, I'll just, for the record, this is like been.
Couple of years.
Pandemic, which made it difficult to do.
Yes. I guess I don't want urgency to be, it's, it's urgent.
There's no urgency, but I, I do want to.
Just want to put it on the record though. That.
Can, can I just finish my, can I just finish? I'd say, I don't think there's urgency that I want to recognize because I don't want Jonathan, Robin to think that, like dismiss what just happened because I think they did a great job. I think they did it as soon as they could.
Yes.
Once the pandemic made meetings happen, because I don't, I don't think that meeting, those meetings would have been the same virtually. So that's, that's all I, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying, I don't want to, I don't want to dismiss like, that wasn't enough because nobody said that was.
Yeah.
It, but I, so I want to just hold space that.
Yes.
But I, we heard a lot of voices and so.
And I also want to recognize the community advocates who have been asking us to look at this for several years, if not decades.
Okay. And I want to continue to say that I think that I would, I would be more satisfied if we heard from, from black families. That we have a, we, not, it's not a criticism on the work, the work is excellent. You know, the focus groups are great, paying for childcare, paying for having food at the meetings. Participating in the city actually offers a hundred dollars per meeting for any community member coming in to, to provide their expertise or their lived experience. So it's a hundred dollars per meeting with her, doesn't even matter the bureau. So I, I think that's great. And we, we, we have a, a, we need to hear from black voices.
So I would like, I would like to.
So it's a, it's an and, thank you for your work.
And hear more.
I would like to see the POICs and the Jefferson, you know, affinity groups and, you know,
I would like.
Black parent initiatives and these, and, and also just, I just want us to be comfortable talking to black families.
I would like to see us make a change to this policy by, before the budget cycle for next year. So that we give our school, if we, if we decide that we, whatever, I mean, so when we change this, it'll, it won't go into effect until the 23, 24 school year. Because we're starting in 22, 23.
Okay, yes.
So any, if we make changes next year, they wouldn't go into effect until 23, 24.
Correct. And, and, and then when he's predate, I mean, they go, they go back so far.
But I think I would like to see us move on this policy so that we don't delay it another year. Right? So that we're able to say to our school-based partners and to our community advocates, we've made changes, we've made reforms, we've made adjustments on that timeline. So yes, we want to include more voices and do more work. And we want to, we do want to move with some forward motion because it has been.
That's great. Um, because the budget this got adopted did have inequities in the staffing that was provided to schools, um, both for the schools in the middle, but also if you were a neighborhood school adjacent to a focus program, they got staffed differently.
Yeah.
Um, they didn't have to staff to the maximum, which, um, neighborhood schools did, so.
Director Brim Edwards, thank you for bringing up that, uh, to the staff. Because of your, uh, uh, look at this and, and bringing this into our attention, we are going to be addressing that. So we look forward to, to addressing, to your point, uh, possible inequities that may have existed. And I want to appreciate you particularly for pointing that out.
I, I do want to point it out that I'm not advocating that they have large class sizes, just, just for the record. I'm advocating that other neighborhood schools not have large class sizes.
Yeah, I think, I think we're.
Person blame.
Parody. It's about parody, right?
As I pointed out, an inequity that just has existed in the system. So I just.
Right, and we, we have to address the parody of it. So I totally agree between the parody between neighborhood and dual immersion. So again, appreciate your, your, your recommendation in, in looking into this.
Um, any, any other questions or discussion about the community engagement? And noted, Director DePass, your request for additional engagement.
From black families.
We can say it, black families.
Yeah, I, I was in sentence.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No, I just was vibing with Michelle. I, sorry. I didn't mean to assume you weren't going to say that.
Yeah, apologies.
So I want to thank Jonathan and Robin for what you did. It's great. And, uh, Gary, do we have any public comment or you want to continue?
Maya?
I have nothing.
Um, Maya Bellova Gildern.
Robin?
Yeah, you can. And since, um, we have additional time, we take two to three minutes, some flexibility, so.
I would love a little bit of flexibility.
Just, but no more than three.
Yeah, I will, I will do my best. Um, I, um, my name is Maya Bellova Gildern. Last name is spelled V as in Victor O N, space capital G E L D E R N. My pronouns are she, her. Um, I'm the current incoming Vernon PTA president. I work closely with our son's school staff, our families of black students, Los Familias, and our other affinity groups at Vernon. I am very aware, this is outside of my testimony plan, but I'm very aware of the space that I take up in this conversation. I'm a native Hawaiian who has fought for racial justice and equity in education, housing, everything. My entire life for my own people in my own land. So, um, my, I immediately go to our families of color, work with our, specifically our black families, not to speak on behalf of them, but for them to inform me so that I make the decisions and the, and the, um, have the perspective because of the things I learned from our community. I am able to work from home and I am able to drop my children off with family too, so that I can be here at these meetings. So while I was not planning on speaking tonight, when it seemed that there were still spaces available, I was asked by the group of us from the roundtable at McDaniel, along with the other parents to sign up for space and so period. I want to thank Dr. Brim Edwards for consistently attempting to bring up this discussion to, bring this discussion to the forefront of the conversation. And Director Hollins, who isn't here for taking the time to come to Vernon for our Families of Black Students event, talking with me briefly at the event about specific, this specific issue about fundraising. Somehow it seems to be a conversation that is like an off limits conversation. We table it. I've seen it tabled over the last few years consistently. It's a big conversation. I understand that fundraising is a hard conversation. We risk alienating some communities by even bringing it up as they fear for all they lose if things were to change. But the thing is, we risk even more by not doing so. Can you imagine the communities that don't have access to funds like others do? They've never had these luxuries in the first place, let alone risk losing them. How does PPS consider this to be the time for equitable education, yet continue to foster an equitable, inequitable funding system? There is a reason for the district determined differentiated funding model. It specifically allocates more staff to CSI, TSI, and Title I schools for, for a very good reason. We all know that image that illustrates the meaning of equity for people to understand who don't understand it. Those boxes that give a child the foundation for trying to see over the fence. The differentiated funding model is set to provide the opportunity to start off with every child seeing over the fence. Does that mean different sized boxes? Yes, it does. But equity, that's what we're working for. We're not talking about equality. We're talking about equity and that's how it has to work. When we allow schools to pay for positions that are not all, all, that not all schools are afforded, those with resources continue to reach heights that are unattainable for others. We cannot have this be the case of public schools. We have schools that struggle to raise a few thousand dollars.
Yes, concluding statement.
Yeah, concluding statement. Lincoln raises nine hundred, raised $965,355 last year between their, their foundation and their PTA fundraising. We have schools, Jefferson, we have ML Martin Luther King Jr. that don't raise anything, that on their nine nineties with the IRS file zero. That is not equitable and it never will be. And we cannot let those boxes continue to stay the same size as the same children again and again are left behind.
Thank you so much for, for participating and us participating in the roundtable. Thank you.
Virtually, we have, um, Polly Rabasa.
Good afternoon. My name is Magali Rabasa. My last name is R A B A S A, and I use she/her pronouns. I'm a parent at Rigler Elementary. I spoke to you a few months ago. And I'm also the new incoming PTA co-president at Rigler. As I mentioned before, because of the multiple historical systems of oppression that the majority of Rigler families face, our school does not have a foundation, nor does it have a robust PTA structure capable of significant fundraising. And these same systems of oppression put our students at a disadvantage when it comes to learning, which is why equitable and not equal funding is essential. I participated, like Maya and others, in the roundtable at McDaniel last Thursday with many parents from other mostly Title I schools. And while we were very appreciative of the childcare, the food and the payment and the compensation for our time, we were disappointed, particularly those of us from Rigler, that no interpretation was offered as that excluded many veteran parent leaders from our school community. On a similar note, I appreciate Doctor, uh, Director DePass's insistence that more black families be part of the conversation. I think that is urgent and very needed. As a group, we were united in our stance that parents should not be able to pay for teachers at individual schools. This was very clear in our conversation. And this is a fundamental first step that must and can be taken immediately. We don't need to wait for a holistic reform to make that immediate change. Beyond this key problem, we were united in our concerns about the many ways that PTA and foundation fundraising severely exacerbates inequity. The current fundraising policies and practices perpetuate a system that pits so-called good schools against bad schools, wherein these good schools are more protected from problems like principal churn, something we faced at Rigler repeatedly, unfilled teaching and staff positions, instability of enrichment offerings, and mismanagement or inability to manage the funds that we do receive. The current fundraising system perpetuates a deeply problematic model of charity, where wealthier school communities have control over if and how they share their resources. As parents, we want fundraising to be guided by principles of solidarity, not charity, where all school, school communities have agency and dignity as part of a united and collaborative district. And as Dr. Beth Kavanaugh's research shows, the proposal for 50% revenue sharing is unacceptable. And I want to know and make it clear that at the McDaniel Roundtable at least, there was no mention of the 50% proposal, to my recollection. Nobody proposed that or suggested or supported that. We want fundraising to shift from the current siloed model where parents fundraise for their individual children at their individual school to a collective, community-wide approach to both fundraising and distributing money. The district needs to and can set the tone for this, creating a mandate that schools stop hoarding resources. Thank you very much for hearing our voices and for creating the space of these roundtables. We now ask that you take steps to act on this information. The board has a responsibility to respond to the findings from these roundtables, which overwhelmingly support fundraising reform and ending funding of FTE by local school foundations. PPS has a tremendous opportunity to create lasting transformation and to be a leader nationally. So now is the time for us to put our commitments to equity into action. Thank you for your time.
Very much for sharing your thoughts with the community today.
Also, virtually, Deniquea Jamila Rashid.
Hello. My name is Deniquea Jamila Rashid. I'm a parent at Roosevelt High School and I attended the PPS Roundtable discussion at McDaniel High School last Thursday. As a parent organizer, I wanted to speak today to make sure the voices of parents are heard. At the roundtable, participants repeatedly stated that the current system of fundraising and especially the foundation policy is deeply flawed and extroverts existing inequity across PPS as a group. We were united in our belief that parents should not be able to buy teachers for their schools. It is unethical and it is unacceptable. We call on the board to act now to prohibit parent fundraising from being used to pay for FTE. We also have concerns about other issues related to parent fundraising and want to call on the board to make changes to the existing policies and practices to create transparency around staffing and programming at every school and how staff is paid for. This will help our community better understand the needs of every school and allow us as a district to provide for every student. In our decisions last week, many parents shared their concerns about differences between raising huge amounts of money to pay for teachers, field trips, enrich programs, and other educational opportunities. And those schools who are struggling to fundraise to meet the basic needs of their community members, things like coats, food, housing, transportation, et cetera. The grants from the fund for PPS don't even scratch the surfaces of those schools' needs. And increasing the percentage of wealthy, wealthy schools contribute won't change that. Charity does not equal equity. There is no dignity in being handed a small cut of a wealthier school's funds. We want to be invited to every table to work together, unite for all students, united for a strong and better PPS. Thank you for creating a space to hear our voices. Now that you've heard from us, we ask that you please move on these issues. Let's work together to create a greater equity for all PPS students. Thank you.
Thank you so much for, uh, joining us today and also your participation, um, at the roundtable. Thank you.
Also, please, Jamie Painter.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me today. I was not at the roundtable and instead I will be sharing, um, the remarks from my incoming PTA President Celeste Grover. I am a member of the Scott Elementary School PTA and the mom of a kindergartner. I, I'd like to make one suggestion before I get started. As a new, um, participant, if there was name tags, so we could see who was speaking, it'd be great, um, for the audience to be able to see who was saying what. But let me get started. I'm going to read from Celeste's perspective, but my name is Celeste Grover. I'm a parent at Scott Elementary, where I'm also the incoming PTA president. Because of the multiple historical systems of oppression that the majority of Scott families face, our school does not have a foundation. While our PTA has been active and a strong presence at our school for several years, our main focus has little to do with fundraising. Instead, we are committed to being present, listening, and cultivating a community of mutual support. The limited money we do raise goes directly back into our school community to fill basic needs, ensure equity between our DLI and neighborhood programs, and to bring our diverse populations together to build community partnerships. In addition, a lot of our time and energy goes into advocacy work to ensure Scott, the McDaniel's cluster, and other PPS Title I schools are receiving equitable funding and attention. As a school community, we simply do not have the capacity for additional fundraising efforts. I was one of the participants in the PPS Roundtable at McDaniel's last Thursday with community members from other PPS, mostly Title I schools. As a group, we were united in our stance that parents should not be able to pay for teachers at individual schools. This is a fundamental first step that must and can be taken immediately. Beyond this key problem, we are united in our concern about the many ways that PTA and foundation fundraising severely exacerbates inequity. The bulk of parent fundraising relies on the unpaid labor of women in our school community. We are in favor of a district-wide fund for fundraising for staff, but it felt harder to extend this model to all parent fundraising. We need transparency first, and then we can address all other parent group fundraising reform. There is no reason to wait to reform foundation fundraising. Parent groups should be required to submit a report to PPS for every fundraiser, possibly over a certain dollar amount, that details the amount raised and how the funds will be spent. Parent groups should also be required to meet district-wide to review and discuss the data with a lens on equity and work to create a system for sharing wealth. Some of the people participating in foundation work or contributing to foundations may not understand how their contribution to the fund for PPS is distributed, nor how the dollar amount actually impacts schools receiving funds. The requirement could come from the reform of board policy 7 dot 10 dot 020 P, parent groups in the schools. Some Scott staff members have expressed concerns about sharing their opinions on this topic because they are afraid of how it will impact our school. They agree that it is an overall inequitable practice, but this must be balanced with what it could mean for our students, especially those that continue to be underserved. This fear is exactly why reform needs to occur to make funding more equitable. So our teachers, staff, and administrators don't have to rely on the charity of wealthy schools to provide our students with their basic needs, while most of the money raised continues to provide for those who already, are already provided for. We really appreciate you hearing our voices. We ask now that you take steps to act on this information. PPS in our state legislature has a constitutional responsibility to find a way to fund all of our schools to make them great. Parents can and want help with that process and will be more successful if we are unified in our action. We must start by reforming policies that perpetuate privilege at the expense of our most marginalized communities. These policies are an obstacle to the right of every student to grow up in a community that provides a good education and opportunities for growth to every child. Equity facilitates equal prosperity. Thank you so much for your time today.
I was just going to say, your, your time is up. Um, thank you for, um, sharing Celeste's perspective. And also for the note, we normally have placards, they just aren't here today. So, um, thank you for reminding us how helpful that is. We all sometimes know each other, um, but we do normally have placards. So sorry that we didn't this meeting, um, and that it wasn't clear too. But thank you for calling it out because we need, we need to be reminded. And thanks for, um, sharing Celeste's testimony.
I think we also got that in writing, correct?
We do have it in writing.
Yeah, thank you, Jamie. And I love your, I want to be wherever you are, outside in the green. It's beautiful.
That concludes your sign here. Okay, thank you. I see Director Hollins has joined us. And, um, Gary, I'm wondering, are you, are you here to listen or do you have something you want to share or be part of the discussion?
Just to listen.
Great. Thank you for joining us today and also thank you for suggesting, um, some names of people to participate in the roundtable. We had a, a good turnout and, um, you brought additional community people in. So thanks for, um, the support for staff running that. Um, so that concludes our roundtable. I have, I did have a question, um, about one of the, the themes that came. about one of the themes that came up, about transparency. And and this may not be an answer now question, but more of a how would it happen? So one of the things that we talked about in the past, just like the Fund for Portland Schools, is a separate independent 501(c)(3), that PTAs and PTOs are 501(c)(3)'s and that they have their own boards and they do their own things. And what, where's like the point of intersect? And I do think the conversations of Robin and Jonathan and I had identified some clear intersects, that staffing, the capital improvements, contracts, field trips. But I guess my other question would be, I don't know that we could just flat out tell a separate 501(c)(3), here's what you have to report. But I'm wondering if, for example, if a school says to all their teachers, the PTA is going to provide $200 per teacher to buy supplies, whether through policy or district guidance it could be, and that needs to, you know, when the donation, whether it's in kind or cash, is made to the school, that that becomes sort of a reportable event? So if our staff are accepting, or our schools are accepting something of value, that that seems where the, and again, I'm not aware, so I don't know what the nonprofit statute does, but that may be the place where we get the transparency. So it's not like we have the ability to, you know, say who your board is or anything like that. But if you're the, if you're going to be doing, you know, X and giving, transferring money or goods into our schools, that that is something that we need to be transparent.
I thought when you started, you weren't asking questions. I think you are asking questions. Let me try to.
No, I am asking a question because I don't know if I'm doing it right. I'm just trying to think about this question of people wanting transparency, but also that they're separate 501.
So no separate entity can force PPS to accept something. PPS says no. And PPS can say, here are the conditions upon which we will accept these things. Right? So I think you want it, I think that's a pretty straightforward line, but the administration of that is, I think, where the rubber meets the road. You want to think about what kind of thresholds or rules or documentation we need to make that administratively successful and productive. But I don't, no entity has any ability to force PPS to accept something.
Don't we have a rule that, I mean, we already have in policy, I'm trying to find it, a rule that says that parent groups, if they do something that's over a certain dollar threshold, five thousand, but we don't enforce that policy?
Yeah, and I think what I'm, yes, that's correct. But I guess I'm trying to get at, and maybe this is a, like, come back and share with us, how you think it could work, because I do think there's operational issues.
And I, Robin.
Well, but I, yeah, but the whole prospect of, you know, we're requiring a separate, it's my understanding is that PPS couldn't just flat out require, like, because you exist, you have to register with us and give you your 990. But I do think whether it's a cash stipend or gift cards or in kind, that PPS could have a policy of this is.
These are the conditions under which we will accept this gift.
Right. And so I guess I look at that, that is potentially one way now. If a PTA or a foundation raises a whole bunch of money and just sits on it. I mean.
But then they get in trouble with the IRS, that there are rules on how much a nonprofit can have in their holdings, right?
Well, and then we'll also see it in the 990. But if the thing, if the, I did have heard this. You know, we heard at the roundtables, it's been raised before, like, how do we have a better sense of what it is? And I do think that Jonathan and Robin, just in their own sort of gathering of information, the 990s, it was illuminating what the information said. But I guess I'm trying to get at the, one of the themes that, you know, because I think you can't do anything about something you don't even know what it is.
Transparency.
Right. I mean, because it could be like, hey, after we look at it, there's this school that gives each teacher $1,500 in a stipend to buy supplies all year or to have class parties or whatever, you know, whatever it is. And this school has 150. And then there's a, there could be a policy decision, like, you know, we think this is the sort of the max per, you know, per school. Or it's that this is where we might do what we did with the field trips. Instead of limiting that on one end, providing some sort of fund on the other end. But it seems like getting the, maybe the data and seeing if there is a way to do it, to.
You say get the data.
Well, the data of like, what's going into our schools, getting at this.
By asking our administrators.
Or what are the conditions you have?
It's providing a level of transparency. I mean, even if it could be a dashboard of some type. Because I think when it's in black and white, makes it really clear. You mentioned the $965,000 and 37 cents or whatever that was.
$355.
Yeah, I mean, that's huge. So that's huge. I mean, I know, like, King School has killed King Elementary.
But I appreciate, I appreciate the suggestion about, you know, needing the data for PTAs. I also think we, you know, let's not, let's not, let's not play it around. We know that there are inequities in PTAs, and I don't think there's a mistake about that. We know that there are more inequities, I would argue, in PTAs and other places than in LSFs. And so I think, let's not, let's not, let's not, let's not hold back just because we don't have data. We have a lot of data that suggests that PTAs. I mean, we have research, national research, we have local research that suggests that there are inequities in PTAs. So I don't want to get stuck on, we need all this data to make a decision. So I would encourage the board, we know what we, that there are inequities in PTAs. And it's, it's our, I mean, we heard it loud and here from the public comment. We have to do something. If we're really truly addressing the inequities, let's address it. Let's not, let's not hide behind data searches.
Yeah, so Jonathan, I actually am not, I'm trying to figure out a mechanism of how it is you create a nexus to the spend into the school. I'm not, I'm not trying to just collect data, but I'm actually, like, where is the nexus? Because if there's not a nexus, I don't, I don't see how we set a policy. So this is what I'm trying to figure out, what the nexus is for us to be able to pass that. Just as another, my understanding of nonprofits, if they're separate, they have a, they have a set of rules and PPS couldn't just tell a nonprofit. So we couldn't just, for example, go to the Latino Network and say, you have to give us a third of your fundraising or whatever. I mean, because they're a separate 501(c)(3), which is what PTAs are. So I'm not, I'm not sure we disagree. I'm trying to figure out how it is that you even would. Are you understanding what my question is?
I think I'm not, because I think I keep answering it and I'm clearly not.
Well, no, I'm actually responding to.
So I mean, you, so keep going with the question.
So. My question wasn't, my question wasn't clear because Jonathan's response, because it's not a data delay. It's where would the nexus be, say, if you were to say they need to provide 50% or some other number?
You would say the condition, I mean, you could define the conditions upon which you would receive the donation. And I think that's probably limited only by our creativity and what we want that to be. I mean, I, you could say to a PTA, I presume, I mean, I'm shooting from the hip.
And you don't have to give a response.
But for exploration purposes, if you give, you know, $100, if you want to give $100 to this school, PTA for this school, you also have to give, you know, our condition for that is that this also be given to the school. Right? I mean, similar to the foundation school. I mean, I think PPS is in control of what it receives. Those actions may limit dollars that come into the entire district. They may limit their consequences to those. They get to make their own choice in response to that. They may figure out what are the relationship pieces in the school. But I, I think the parameters are pretty broad for PPS setting the conditions for receipt of donations into.
That's right, Liz. And in my previous district, we laid out a number of conditions for any nonprofit, any 501(c)(3) that in order for them to do business and business in the broader sense of the word, they had to do a number of certain things. So there's precedent nationally around the role that, you know, government can do to tailor this. And I'm happy to provide the committee information from previous districts.
Some of the. So administrators bring up the issue too of like, they're raising money with our school name and we, what about when we don't see the money? So there is also, like, that's still a question to answer. So I think there's two pieces to it. There's like, how do you do it legally? And I don't, I'm not asking you to answer it right now, because this is like a surprise question. And then second, what are the operational pieces that would be at play? Like I say, it's really easy with things like contracts and capital projects and staff, because like, it can't be affected. They can't do it without PPSs facilitating it. And so I guess that would be some of the pieces, that's the non-legal side of it. So that would be the question I would ask. And like, how you, how you can do that?
Right. And I think Robin and Jonathan, in consultation with building administrators, are the best people to think about what is, what is a reasonable administrative structure for that, to receive an account that doesn't take more time than the value that the donations might be worth? That doesn't create a black market system where there are secret donations coming in that tries to be built in a relationship of trust and cooperation to prevent it from happening? Right? Those are all the kinds of things I think that conversation would want to entail. Not just what does the form look like, but how is it building the right kind of? Because the PTA and PPS care deeply, passionately about the children in that school. How do you build the right systems to work together for them? But I can't tell you what they are. I mean, I do think the building admin is really critical in terms of defining how that could work for them. If you add more to building admin, like, one of your standards would work well. I'm not saying anything that's wrong.
No, I, but this is like the, I'm thinking through because I think the first reaction was like, hey, we need, why everybody to register? And it's like, well, we're independent. And so it's a deeper conversation about it. And we do all the time say, if you want to participate in something, then, you know, here are the set of rules. Like, I sort of, my question is, is like, could PPS do that without any sort of policy guidance? I mean, and so that's another piece.
I do think ideally, all situations are creating, but having that conversation with the PTA, building it together, instead of showing up opposing, these are the top-down rules from the district is different than, let's talk, here's the problem we're trying to solve. How can we collaboratively build a system that we can do that? Here's what we're trying to solve across the district. Your engagement here, how can we empower you to have bigger impact? I think that's the kind of approach you want to have, right? You always have the hammer, but it doesn't give you the greatest yield short and long.
And I do think there's, I mean, so what I just thought, when, I think, I think you're right, Julia, that we need to get information about how our schools are utilizing funds. And I think we do have the ability to put some limits and guardrails on that. You know, if we say, okay, you can only give your teachers a $500 stipend, well, then I know people are going to figure out ways to work around it. So if we can have people on board from the beginning as we move towards equity. How do I know that? Because I know schools that do it. I've seen it. I mean, my thought is, okay, we limit it to $500, well, then that means other people, like, people donate supplies to the class and that doesn't count as money. So that, like, there's all sorts of ways. So if we have, if we have it collaboratively from the beginning, maybe they'll need less of that. But I do think you're right. I mean, I do think we need to really move how we accept money. I think that's a brilliant thought, Julia, as we begin that.
Yeah, I think it's a really important thought. And I think it also, Jonathan can weigh in here because this is part of the earlier conversation, but how the, I think the district has one sense of what are the supplies the district provides? And we're hearing that there is this.
A sense from others.
Right. So whether it's PTA provided, family provided, district provided, how do those work together? What is the district's point of view on what should be in every classroom without those other inputs, right? And so not to chase them away, but to have, one of the equity questions is, are the supplies shown in the right places in the right quantities? Right, Jonathan, is that fair encapsulation?
Absolutely.
So that would be. Be interested in the people you named.
So Mike, can I just?
Come up with that, because I do think it's not as straightforward as the other pieces. And yet, I, you know. So sometimes the district has come up with, or our nonprofit partners have come up with things like schoolhouse supplies, which didn't provide that. I mean, I guess one of the things that I heard that, Robin, you touched on, which was the theme, is like, how do we get out of the silos of my school? So even like the school supply is like, how do we have something district-wide that every, you know, kid doesn't just get the eight crayon box, but gets the, you know, 64? And like, we have a, no 300s. Nobody has 300. Not that I.
I can still see this.
I think my concern with this whole conversation has been like, I think that fundraising for staff is a huge question if we're going to allow that. Then my concern about doing away with foundations has been, then how do we ensure the money doesn't all then just flow to PTAs where there isn't any equity? Because it's, so it's like, we have multiple strands. And I think that's, that's something you've been really thoughtful about thinking through, Julia, is how do we, how do we continue to promote a radically different culture around fundraising? And I think your three areas of note, and all of you who spoke, that collective impact, the community building, and I can't think of the third one off the top of my head, transparency, are really key to like the way we want to go forward.
So I want to just be clear that it's, to me, I'm not for eliminating foundations or PTAs or anything else. Those are just mechanisms.
Yeah.
What I'm, and this last budget cycle really drilled in, is like, the buying staff is really inequitable. And so like, that's what I'm, that's what I've been focused on, not the mechanism. Because, you know, when you start, say in a world in which you couldn't buy staff, well, some people are like, why do we have a separate foundation? We'll just use the PTA and then you have a mechanism for that. So it's not, like, a foundation in and of itself is not, is not the thing that I'm focused on. It's the, what they're allowed to buy because it's the most fundamental thing that PPS has to offer. And that is like, and that's the thing that makes the biggest difference to a student, which is a qualified teacher in the classroom or additional educational supports. So to me, it's like, it's a distraction to be focused on, whether it's a foundation, a PTO, a PTA, a booster club or whatever. And I think it's going to be, it's going to be complicated because, as I say, the other things are big tangible items that, that they can't like build something without a permit that PPS, you know, gives them. They can't buy a staff person without putting the money into an account, telling a teacher you're going to stay. So if other community members are okay with it, would ask staff to come back with a, what if, you know, what kind of model? And again, I think we should look at it in a, in an entity-neutral way. Because that's not the, that's not the thing that's the issue. It's the buying. But answering these other questions, because they are just a lot more, you know, like, hey, we're going to buy 15 baseball hats or, you know, whatever it is. And then, you know, I guess the other set of rules are the, are the foundations, that all those entities, are those also like the field trip entities? Or is it, how does that interplay with the the school account? Sorry, student account. Because, so like, okay, then is the money just. Student account, because, so like, okay, then is the money just going to go to the, you know, account, and so that seems like a relevant piece as well, so you write the field trip check to the school, or are you writing to the foundation, you maybe get a deduction? But it's the same, you know, it's money flowing in, so I guess that's the other question I, I would also, just to the team, come back with recommendation.
And I, I think.
I think it would also be beneficial to look at, um, like, what we can do now. Um, when we went to, when I observed on the roundtable discussion at McDaniel's, um, overall, um, especially among our, like, Title I schools, they're saying no to buying, um, staffing, but, you know, they don't have this, you know, uh, we, we shouldn't expect our, you know, communities to have the solutions to, uh, fundraising. But there is things that we can do in the now, like long-term goal, uh, or short-term goals, and things that we can do in the future.
Yeah, and I appreciate Director Brym Edwards, what you said about, you know, uh, or, you know, being neutral, or, you know, or blind, if you will, to the entities. Because I think, I think to your point, I mean, I think, you know, where I, where I sit in this, in, in the, or, you know, and as I think about this, I think, you know, I appreciate, you know, your, your look at the macro when we think about staffing. I think about the micro, where, you know, again, if we use the, the paradigm that is being used around parity, and some schools have something that others don't, you know, I think about the experience of kids who don't have access to, uh, you know, extra field trips, or the, the more expensive base, uh, baseball or basketball, or the, you know, uh, the, all those extra things that we know makes the school experience more joyful. And I, I think about, you know, what happens when, you know, uh, the, at the micro level, you know, there, there's, there's discrepancies, right, and, and, and the inequities that that creates. So, so I, as, as much as, again, I, I also, I appreciate the, the look at the macro, but again, at the micro, when Suzie is getting, you know, more things than, than another student at another school, uh, is that, is that, is that, is that the type of organization, uh, that we want to work for and be part of?
I want to also just make, solicit something that I think is embedded in all of this, that with, with equity being the overarching goal and the top of the hierarchy of communities. But we are also, I think what's also embedded in this discussion is a desire to have, to have fundraising and contributions from the community to the school. And so I just want to make sure I'm not, or do you, is this a statement of we, we don't value that? Because that's, fundraising has been a part of school communities for a long time, so I just want to make sure.
Well, I think, I think it's nuanced, because I, I didn't, I didn't hear, um, individuals saying, we want to get rid of it, but people said, we did it, we do it for different reasons. And I think, and some of it's community building, some of it's essentials, that's what I've, what I, I heard. Uh, but it wasn't like, we, we don't want to have it, because we, we see our, we see students show up with needs and teachers show up with needs, and we want to. So I, I did.
The system you built could disincentivize or incentivize.
Right.
Depending on your, what your, your, your focus on that.
That, is that an accurate statement, what I said, is like, there, there, there was still a sense of, we use it for community building, I mean, like, for example, Scott, it was like, we don't have any events that people can't afford. The people, the, that, our point isn't to raise money at some of those events, they're more community building, um, and we raise money for essentials. Um, so I don't think it's to get it rid of altogether. I think that the difference is, like, and I'm probably the wrong person to say this, because I have a bias, but like, the, the sense was, but when you're buying a teacher, that's like.
So, I want, I want you to get the equity at the top, assume you satisfy equity, big assumption. We are not saying we are trying to
But that is not what I, that is not what I heard.
Of course. Trying to occur, so how you, how you make tax advantageous places versus not, like, I mean, those are questions, and you think about structures, what you're trying to incentivize or not. So that's what I'm just testing.
I didn't hear that.
Um, I, I just, since we were at the, um, roundtable, I just wanted to put one thing out, which is that we did speak quite a lot about actually just doing district-wide fundraising, where we all fundraise as a district, and that money gets dispersed equitably throughout the school. So we fundraise for field trips, and that money goes into a pot, which then gets distributed to the school.
So kids are going to end up in school together somewhere, you know, we, kids at our school are going to go to Jefferson or McDaniel. Kids at their school are going to go to Grant or Jefferson, kids at the other school are going to go to McDaniel or Grant. Our kids end up together, and so if we are saying we only care about our only, our children, like, my, my fourth grader and kindergartner, then that's the way that we are fundraising now. If we are going to think about how the education and the support that we're giving our school is going to affect their education on the whole, then it has to affect all of the children in their school, in their district, in their communities, because they're going to end up together. So if kids at Rigler are not getting music and kids at Alameda are getting music, and they all end up in Beaumont together, who's going to be playing music in Beaumont? There has to be a way that we think larger than our school PTA, and I know you said very specifically, PTAs care about their schools. I know that for me and the work that I do, and for people that I work with in our PTA, we don't just care about Vernon. We care about King, we care about Fabian, we care about Rigler, we care about Scott, we care about kids in our community. Because unless I'm willing to say I only care about my kindergartner and fourth grader, then the reality is I care about other children too, and that needs to be addressed. And the current way of fundraising only for our schools means that Grant and, or, let's just say, I already brought up Lincoln, Lincoln takes home six hundred thousand dollars to spend in their community, where Jefferson does not have that support, and that's not okay. So I, I'm constant at the time.
Sorry.
And so there's, um.
I have an anniversary dinner, so.
I appreciate, um, there's two things, um, that I want to do. I want to, um, Beth, ask for, ask for two minutes of public comment, and I'm sorry, I didn't, um, see it earlier. And I know you just flew in and came straight here to Beth, I wanted to hear that, but also, I also want to recognize, um, Gary, you had your hand up, is there something you want to, um, to say or to comment on?
Yes, uh, and I'll keep it quick, um, and I, I am off the equity issue with the funding piece. Um, I do wonder if we talking about staying children-centered, if we are looking at ways to be equitable. Um, what impact do it have, for instance, if we say we don't want any of the funding going towards teachers? What, what? I guess, but, the what repercussions is that for those schools that might lose those teachers? Like, what impact is it for those kids at those schools?
Do you want an answer now? So then they, they get what the staffing formula that PPS has provide, provides.
Equitable staffing.
The equitable, the staffing formula that currently exists.
So is that, is that a negative or a positive?
It's a reduction in staff.
It's, it's a reduction in staffing, because they've actually added to their own staffing, but from the dist, from the district standpoint, they, they're getting what other schools with similar demographics will get. So it's not that they, uh, pay for staff, and that then reduces what they get from the district. It is, they get what goes through the, the formula. Um, but we can share more information with you. Um, actually, I had one last, more thing before Beth, and we will let you go. I just want to make sure that the committee members are on board with, um, what, yes, happened to us.
Well, Director, can I, sorry, really quick, Director Hollins, I appreciate the question, I think, you know, um, we'll, we'll get back to you with kind of more, a, a, a thought, you know, a staff response on, on that question, um, and I'll work with the team to, to, to look at, you know, possible impacts that that would have, just, uh, to, to, to address your point.
Thank you, that was it.
Hi, I'm Beth Kavanaugh, and I just, really quickly, because these materials are published, I wanted to have a chance to just provide a little context that, um, this, these documents, I can't remember what it's titled on the meeting materials, but.
The background for committee members.
For committee members. Um, I was asked to model what it would look like if the, um, what the relationship between school demographics and fundraising dollars would look like if the, uh, percentage required contribution was increased to fifty percent. I know that's something that has come up often in discussions, that number. Um, and so I just wanted to provide just to what's in this packet, I wasn't comfortable just providing one alternative, um, so I did a whole range, because I can never just do one thing. So, uh, so this also provides a look at seventy-five percent contribution and two different versions of a district-wide model. Now, all of these are obviously theoretical models, based, I, there's examples based on a low fundraising and a high funding years, and they're also broken down by, um, grade bands, by K-five, K-eight, middle and high school. So, um, the first page is correlations, which I just wanted to put out there while, um, we can see that how relationships are strengthened or weakening based on that percentage. Uh, statistical significance is really not useful with only eighty-two schools, you really need more like a sample size of five hundred or something. So while there's valuable information there, I just really want to direct your attention to the, uh, the bar charts that show more about the distribution. And, um, those are the ones that show the grade bands, and in those, the schools are arranged in order from the highest to the lowest, or excuse me, from the lowest to the highest percentage of historically underserved students in those buildings. So, um, the, the schools at the, on the left side of the chart have the fewest historically underserved students. All the ones at the far end of the chart have the highest number. So, um, there, that again shows the difference between what the distribution would look like at the thirty-three percent sort of baseline where we're at now, a fifty percent, seventy-five percent, and then the district-wide, um, options. And, um, one thing that I thought was super interesting was how you don't really get the lower, um, or the, the schools serving more, um, historically underserved students to a similar dollar amount as the higher, the current high fundraising schools until that, like, seventy-five percent point of view. And then at that point, what really stands out is that at all the levels, you've got this group of schools in the middle, somewhere between eight and twenty schools, depending on what you're, you're looking at, they're really getting nothing, because they're not, they don't have foundations, so they're not fundraising, but they also don't qualify under the current grant formula. So that doesn't mean the grant formula couldn't be adjusted, but, so that's what these are based on, and that's why it looks like that.
Yeah, that would really help.
Any, any questions about what's in there, you can email me, um, and happy to talk about this all day as you guys are.
That's, that's something that the heat map doesn't highlight, that if you're, if you're in that middle zone, you're going to probably have higher classes, no, no EAs, uh, because you don't have the, the mechanism for the relief, nor do you have the district support.
Thank you.
Thank you for providing that, and thank you for coming in last night. And with that, we're adjourned, sorry, we ran over.
That's okay.
My dinner class is seven, I booked in some cushion.